Franklin County Board of County Commissioners now back in session. We're going to pick up where we left off. Up next is Ms. Erin Griffith with her report. Please proceed on what items are left.
All right, Commissioners. The first item, attached is the annual consolidated solid waste grant application. In the current fiscal year, the award was $90,909. This annual operating grant helps to offset some of the costs associated with the solid waste department by providing funds for some fuel expenses, tire and hazardous waste disposal charges and testing fees. Board action to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the attached consolidated solid waste grant application.
So moved.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ameson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, next item. At the February 21st meeting, the board approved the cancellation settlement with Government Software Assurance Corporation for the tax collector's office for a refund of approximately $180,000. The board has since approved hardware upgrades for the office in the amount of $70,167.92 funded by the proceeds, and the tax collector has now requested additional upgrades for his office be funded from the refund in lieu of requesting a budget increase for those items in the upcoming fiscal year. Translate Live is a system utilized by other offices around the state which relies upon a kiosk where both employees and customers who speak other languages can communicate with ease. To add the translation kiosks at both the Appalachia Cola and Carabelle Annex locations, it would cost $4,698. Also requested is $2,500 to redesign and update the office's website to be more user-friendly, new desktop computers and DMV monitors with install from contracted vendor Net South for $19,370, and seven new credit card processing terminals. Board action to approve the tax collector's request to fund the translation kiosks, website redesign, desktop computers, DMV monitors and replacement of the credit card terminals from the Government Software Assurance refund.
So moved with the question.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Ameson. Please proceed.
So Erin, this is obviously what was he, what was approved in his budget. And we're getting money from that settlement, but obviously the extra money is, he's already got it all in his budget and ready to go.
Well, the additional funding, he was originally going to ask for more of an increase in his budget due to these items, but I've actually suggested using the refund to go ahead and fund it in the current year.
All right, thanks for the clarification.
All right. Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay. Next item, Franklin County received a $25,000 grant from Duke Energy to assist the county with the creation of a strategic plan for economic development. A strategic plan for economic development helps to steer the economic future of a community by outlining goals and the actions needed to realize those goals. This plan will summarize economic strengths and weaknesses and will provide insight into ways for the county to encourage growth and provide a better support network for local businesses. Franklin County's plan will be tailored for community demographics, location, region, and be comprised of local input and ideas from stakeholders. Pursuant to the ongoing professional services contract with management experts, consultant Tracy Busby has submitted the attached task order to gather the stakeholder input, host public involvement meetings, perform the analysis and gather the community information resources to develop the plan. Board action to approve the attached task order with management experts to develop the county's economic development strategic plan as funded entirely by the grant from Duke Energy.
So moved.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Ameson. A quick question, Ms. Erin, or just to highlight this. I don't know what all the details it's going to need, but I do know that through the Regional Planning Council, East Point has a plan that they might can use to put it together with, and so does Carabelle.
Okay.
They were both, both done through the ARPC.
Okay.
They have economic development plans for both of those entities. That might actually help go into a document that serves the countywide purpose. Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, next item is number four. The Tourist Development Council was awarded a historic preservation grant in the amount of $188,500 for the exhibits needed for the Maritime Museum at Buddy Ward Seafood Landing Park. The grant manager has approved the attached proposed contracts with Forgotten Coast TV for videographic interviews and videography for video displays, and the Appalachia Cola Bay Chamber of Commerce to provide historic photography, videographic research and development of, also development of the displays. So I do have two action items. Action item A, board action to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the attached $10,000 contract with Forgotten Coast TV for the videographic interviews and videography for video displays at the Maritime Museum. And action item B, board action to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the attached $25,000 contract with the Appalachia Cola Bay Chamber of Commerce for the historic photography, videographic research and development of the displays at the Maritime Museum.
Can you look for two separate motions? Item A, pleasure of the board.
So moved.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Ameson, second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous. Action item B.
So moved.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Ameson. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's also unanimous.
Okay, next item is item number five. The Florida Legislature has approved the second year funding of law enforcement salary assistance for fiscally constrained counties. As part of the grant agreement, the Sheriff's Department was required to submit a spending plan to FDLE to outline how the funds were allocated to eligible employees. In the attached spending plan from the Sheriff's Office, the $539,122 annual allocation will be distributed as follows. For ranked position, the plan is as follows, I will just let you all read that. Board action to grant retroactive approval and authorization for the chairman to sign the attached law enforcement salary assistance agreement which had to be returned prior to July 31st to the Florida Department of Law Enforcement.
So moved.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ameson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, next item is number six. The Franklin County Sheriff's Department has received $50,270 in federal funds through the Florida Department of Law Enforcement to assist in combating the meth problem. The funds will be used to purchase thermal monocular cameras, one patrol vehicle, solar panels and housing for the cameras. Board action to grant retroactive approval and authorization for the chairman to sign the attached agreement for the sheriff's meth grant which also had to be returned prior to July 31st to the Florida Department of Law Enforcement.
So moved.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ameson. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This, now, $50,270?
Mm-hmm.
And I'm hoping that they can pick or choose one of those things to purchase because they're not spending, I mean, that's way over.
Well, he's got a $7 million budget. He should be able to pay for stuff with that, I would think. Hope.
You've got to spend it in the right spot, but.
I don't know that $50,000 is going to buy a whole lot of that stuff either.
That's what I was sitting here looking at.
But that's, that's, they're them to figure that out.
I think part of that too, Commissioner Ameson, is the wording of the grant. Those are the allowable uses.
Okay.
So they might use it for just one of those, but they just listed what, you know what I mean? What's allowable in the grant. Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Commissioner, to wear and the sheriff, if you go, if you don't mind, we can go to item six. I hate to do the switch on you on my report. Attached to my report is an executive certificate of participation. It's for the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant. It's known as a JAG grant. The deadline for submission was yesterday, so the chairman, we asked the chairman to sign their certificate of participation. The JAG is an ongoing grant that is used by the Sheriff's Department to supplement his budget. I could just get the board to ratify the chairman's signature on that too. And I know you're going to ask me, well, Michael, how much was that for? And I apologize. Just let me tell you, one, second, I hope I, yeah. In my attachments, let's see here.
It doesn't really say.
It doesn't say.
It doesn't give a dollar amount.
Erin, do you remember how many the JAGs have been in the past?
It seems like they're about the same $50,000 range, yeah.
Roughly, right? Yeah. I've seen something like 30 something or something, 50.
Yeah.
So approximately the same, Commissioners.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have motion to approve by Commissioner Ameson, second by Commissioner Ward. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That is unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioners, next item is number seven on my report. As this latest phase of the Alligator Drive Multi-Use Path Project took a long while to begin due to slow approval process of the additional grant funds to look, to fund the low construction bid, there was an unusually long period of time from the selection of AECOM for CEI services and the subsequent award of their contract. During this time, AECOM lost their employee who served as the residential compliance specialist for the project and had to subcontract to another firm to fill that role. This transition to a subcontractor cost $2,132.46 more than the cost of their employee. FDOT has approved the increase and has provided additional grant funds to cover the increased costs. So I do have two action items for this item as well. Action item A, board action to approve and adopt a resolution authorizing the chairman to sign the supplemental agreement from FDOT for the additional $2,132.46. And then action item B, board action to approve and authorize the chairman's signature on the attached contract amendment with AECOM for an additional $2,132.46.
So move on A.
All right, motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Ameson. Any discussion? And all who are in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. What about action item B?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ameson, second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That is unanimous.
Okay, next item is item number eight. North Florida Construction returned the signed contract for the construction of the repairs to the Womet Creek Bridge on Highway 67 along with their payment and performance bonds. The county has also received the CEI contract back from AECOM engineers. As the last two meetings were canceled, we will need retroactive approval for the chairman's signature to July 5th, 2023. It was important that this project move forward as quickly as possible as the county has just received another deficiency notification from the bridge inspector. So again, I have two action items for this item as well. A, board action to grant retroactive approval and authorization for the chairman to sign the construction contract with North Florida Construction. And B, board action to grant retroactive approval and authorization for the chairman to sign the CEI contract with AECOM engineers.
Action item A.
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ameson, second by Commissioner Ward. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. Action item B.
Your turn.
Second. Oh. So moved.
I knew that was going to happen eventually. Good. Motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Ameson. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous. All right, please proceed.
Okay, Commissioners, items nine through 11 were actually covered under Fonda Davis's report earlier in the meeting. Let's see, and number 12, Duke Energy has submitted the attached easement request for additional transformers and electrical infrastructure to be placed on county-owned property to power the new energy-efficient ball field lights at Brumman Park. This easement is necessary for the connection of the new lights. So right now, things are kind of on hold until we get this, this through. But board action to approve the attached easement with Duke Energy to allow for the placement of the electrical line infrastructure for the park, subject to review and approval of the agreement by County Attorney Michael Schuler.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Ameson. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Good. Okay, number 13, Franklin County is limited by statute to spending 10% of TDC sales tax revenues each year for beach park facilities. In the current fiscal year, as part of beach park facility funding, the TDC has funded a $99,000 transfer to the Parks Department which offsets the maintenance costs of the beach park facilities, a $60,000 contribution to the beach park playground on St. George Island funded by a mixture of state, TDC and private donations, and will also pay off the loan on the St. George Island restrooms in the current year. The renovations of Carabelle Beach Wayside Park are also being funded by a mixture of funding provided by a historic preservation grant, Hurricane Michael insurance proceeds, and, and approximately $180,641 to be paid by TDC beach park facility funds. A portion of this project will need the short-term financing to roll forward into the next fiscal year for the funding allocation to stay below the 10% cap. As Franklin County's pristine beaches are the primary draw for tourists, the enhancement, development and improvement of facilities at the county's beach park locations are important for furthering the advancement of tourism and improving visitor experience. Board action to authorize staff to explore short-term financing options for a beach park facility rolling line of credit to enable the county to make necessary facility enhancement at the beach park locations while working within the 10% cap limitation.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ameson, second by Commissioner Ward. Discussion, I have a question, Ms. Erin. As we are paying off the restrooms this year?
Mm-hmm.
How much are we looking at trying to roll, that we're needing to finance right now?
I believe we'll be financing maybe $120,000 of the Carabelle Beach Park, and it would be very short-term strictly to get us into the new fiscal year.
Next year, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Just out of curiosity, where's the interest rates at right now?
Interest rates are unfortunately high. It's roughly, I believe the loan, the quote I got from Earl, I think, was 5.75%. Yeah, I did include it as a supplemental document, but I don't have the other quotes yet from Centennial or from even Fligid. I was kind of thinking of reaching out to them or through FAC.
All right, that's the only question I had. Any other discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous, three of them.
Next item, number 14. As part of the planned replacement of the existing dune walkovers on St. George Island, the field permits have now been issued for the next three dune walkovers, 8th, 9th and 10th West, and those were ranked to be in the worst condition by the Parks Department for work to begin upon conclusion of sea turtle nesting season, which is after October 31st. It has become necessary to replace the deteriorated structures as the county Parks and Recreation Department is no longer able to repair and keep the walkovers safe in their current condition. Dune walkovers serve as effective methods for erosion control by aiding in the preservation of natural dune topography and native vegetation. As Florida Statute 125 authorizes the use of tourist development sales tax proceeds for erosion control measures, I requested a proposal from the county's coastal engineers, MRD and associates to also assist in the bidding and contract award onsite construction engineering and inspection services for the next three as the county will be bidding the upcoming dune walkovers as a single comprehensive project. As the county has sufficient time due to the early issuance of the permits, it will be possible to complete all elements prior to the next sea turtle nesting season, which includes demolition of the existing dune walkovers, construction of replacement dune walkovers, planting of sea oats, parking stops and post and rope barricade to prevent forward encroachment onto the dune structures. The rise and run of each dune walkover is permitted within DEP guidelines and will be unique to the specific site conditions and topography. The field permits with the design are attached for reference. The replacement walkovers, however, please note, will not be ADA accessible which would mandate a slope of one foot of vertical rise for 12 foot of run or more gradual and do not meet parking requirements with the natural uneven surfacing and space delineation. It was possible to have ramps on both ends of these next three dune walkovers due to the level dune topography with slopes varying up to an allowable 18% incline. Any transition due to topography that would require greater than an 18% slope would mandate the inclusion of stairs for access. As part of the countywide dune restoration project, the county is including the construction of an ADA accessible parking area with multiple designated spaces, Mobi mats and ramp at the county beach park location to provide better public access. So I do have two action items on this item as well. Number A, board action to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the attached task order with MRD and associates for construction, engineering and inspections for the next three dune walkovers at a cost of $9,686, each to be paid by TDC sales tax proceeds. And B, board action to approve advertising for construction for the next three dune walkovers.
Thank you, Ms. Erin. Action item A.
So moved.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Ameson. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous. Action item B.
So moved.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ameson, second by Commissioner Ward. Correct?
Yep, yes, sir.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous.
Next item is number 15. When Island View Park opened to the public in August of 2018, the county received an operational maintenance grant from DEP's BP settlement funds to assist with certain park maintenance expenses. This is not typical for most grant programs. The grant funds can only be used to maintain the existing elements of the park, and requests to fund a fence, a new gate, restrooms and/or picnic pavilion have all been denied. On Friday, we received. On Friday, we received approval for reimbursement from FDEP for the county to contract with a third party to maintain the landscaping, which would be the necessary mowing, invasive plant removal, replacement of dead plants, and other landscape maintenance activities along the waterfront at the park locations, subject to review of the contract by FDEP prior to award. Board action to approve advertising for proposals for landscaping maintenance services at Island View Park.
So move with a question.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Amison. Please proceed, Commissioner Ward.
Well, the, so that the landscaping maintenance will come out of what part of the budget?
It's actually being funded from FDEP, so it's a reimbursable grant.
I didn't know we can make, like, have a continual grant or something. That's good, though.
Yeah, yeah, that was, BP Settlement Funds were actually their own animal. So that's not common.
Good.
We do have about five more years on that, because I believe we had 10 years from when the park opened.
Are they gonna give us any years while the park was closed due to Hurricane Michael?
No credit for that, unfortunately.
That would be nice, wouldn't it? Or just stack it up in our account, that'll work, too. All right, all in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, next item, the county received nearly $9,000 from the county equipment auction for the brick paper salvage from the parking area damaged by Hurricane Michael at Island View Park. The county hoped to use the proceeds from the sale of the papers to install a park-style post and three-slot wooden fence along the Highway 98 side of the parking area. See the sample photo at the right. The Parks Department will handle the removal of the chain link construction fencing. Board action to approve the attached $8,400 estimate from Jason White Construction for the construction of approximately 300 foot of three-slot wooden fence to be paid by the Parks June auction proceeds.
So move with a comment.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Amison. Please proceed, Commissioner.
I just want to make a note for the record, the reason why we're not having to go up for bids for this is because it's under our bid policy of $10,000. Just want to make everybody aware of that.
Ms. Griffith, the Commissioner of the District, that can't be here right now. She was understanding and knowing this was gonna be this style fence, and she's good with it, or?
Actually, I was hoping to talk to her today, so, yeah. Yeah, I will, I will definitely read.
No, I don't think it'd be a problem, I'm just trying to be considerate, that's all.
Yeah, I can actually add to that item, you know, pursuant to review and approval.
That's fine, however you all want to do it, I'm good with it.
Motion to accommodate her.
Yeah, I'm in my second.
Yeah, okay. Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. And I will say, Ms. Erin, before we leave talking about Island View Park, I do intend to put on the, going into the next year, to get the TDC to weigh in about putting restrooms at Island View Park with TDC funds. We can't do it this year, you know what I mean? But in our next year coming up.
Like designating that as a nature center or something along those lines?
Yeah, yeah. Because we're on both sides of the road. I mean, so, yeah.
Next item is item number 17. Attached is the sheriff's budget request, requests removing the two deputy positions that were requested be funded by tourist development and the reduced line item for fuel. Also attached is the sheriff's request for funding consideration along with an alternate proposal, which was sent on to TDC administration for consideration. I wanted to provide a change in the statutory language made by House Bill 7063 in this year's legislative session for the public below. Franklin County is unique, as we have a tourism-based economy without the population base or revenues of most other coastal counties. This uniqueness unfortunately limits our county by statute on what can be done with the sales tax proceeds. The language just added by the legislature allows for Franklin County, as a fiscally-constrained county, to be able to expend up to 10% of tourist development sales tax revenues to reimburse public safety expenses related to increased tourism and visitors. The next meeting of the Tourist Development Council will be held on August 9th, and at that meeting, the council will review the funding request from the Sheriff's Department and will make a recommendation on the request. Upon receipt of the recommendation, the request will next come back to this board for an approval to move forward, and at that time, the board will need to take action to schedule a public hearing to formally amend the TDC spending plan to allow for up to 10% of revenues be allocated for public safety services pursuant to the change in statute. So that was just an informational item. Also miscellaneous project updates, I did mention earlier, I will be bringing back the signed task order for the EMS station and landark at your next meeting. We also have a mandatory pre-bid meeting in the middle of this month, actually at Bruman Park for the field improvements.
I was gonna ask about that, Mr. Chairman, thanks for bringing that up. So, so that's progressing, because it seems like it's come to a standstill. I know we were planning on going up for bids, but that's, it'll be happening mid-August-ish?
Actually, yes, we're out to bid right now on those improvements. We also, at the next meeting, will be opening bids for the replacement of the fencing for fields one and two, and then three and four. And then, the playground renovations are actually in progress right now.
Yeah, I saw that, I've been keeping an eye on that.
Yeah, yeah. And actually, bids are opening for the field drainage improvements in that ADA access path. That's gonna be the first meeting in September when that gets opened.
So we're, just want to make sure we're progressing forward. I know we were, it just, again, the wheels of government turn very slowly, so.
Anyone have anything for Ms. Griffith before we vote? You got a piece, is that it? There's only 25 left, that's all. Mr. Moreau?
Another 25. All right, Commissioners, item one, Ms. Angela Lally from the Billing Department, she received her floodplain administrator certification, certification back in August of 2022, but has yet to be compensated for receiving this certification. It's a practice of the board to compensate employees that receive certifications that directly impact their current positions per their job description and responsibilities. I recommend a $3,500 increase retroactive to August 2022 for Ms. Lally as the county's certified floodplain administrator.
So move.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Amison.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
All right, I'm gonna ask Erin to help me out in this second one here, in 2021. Evergreen Solutions, they were engaged to develop a job classification and pay plan, especially with the impending state mandated $15 per hour minimum wage. After the plan was created, was created and implemented, it was discovered that some employees did not correctly complete their job assessment tool, which, which is the information used by Evergreen to assign classification to employees. The board allowed employees to resubmit their JATs for Evergreen's review and possible reclassification. Evergreen's reevaluation produced the following recommendations, the detailed breakdown, hopefully I attach for your approval, I mean Parks and Rec, new class code maintenance specialists at pay grade six, Road Department and landfill, new class code equipment operator five, no, I'm sorry, six, at pay grade seven? Just one?
Yep.
Okay, landfill also had an employee classification correction, and the Billing Department had class code correction, that was your billing permit text.
Okay. Pleasure, the board.
And I'm sorry, board action to adopt these corrections.
So move.
I think we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Amison. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
At both your June 18th and July 27th meetings, June 18th was a regular meeting, 27th the budget workshop, there was lengthy discussion regarding certification incentive pay for county employees. Mrs. Griffith and I discussed these two items with Evergreen, and they would like the opportunity to discuss how they can assist the county with creating these policies and programs with the board. Would you be willing to hear a presentation from Evergreen at your, one of your August meetings, it might not be your September meeting, at the time I wrote this? So you can question, as I stated at the budget workshop, I'd like the opportunity for you guys to question Evergreen, you know, as to what they're gonna do for you and how you would like it to look and the results that you're looking for.
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I will, do we need to make an action? Is it a motion, it is an action item? I'll make a motion to approve with a comment.
Okay. Motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
And this is just putting them on the agenda, not approving what they're doing. I just want them to be on the agenda to discuss this with you first.
So the motion is to put them on the agenda?
That's all, that's all I'm asking.
All right, second by Commissioner Amison. Any discussion?
Well, because my comment was, I'd like to explore other options. Me personally, I'm not against Erin or anybody else that had anything to do with this, I've just, I don't know the way they've done things, I'm not, just from what I've gathered with the JATs and such, I just, I don't know where they're basing their criteria. I know they compare it to other counties, and it's a market, like a market share, but not everybody's like Franklin County. You cannot compare Franklin County like you can even Gulf County or Waculla County. So, anyway, I'm okay with them coming, but I, and listen to what they have to say, but I want to keep our options open, too.
After their presentation, you could, at that time, you know, you'd decide if you want to go out for some, you know, RFQs, RPs, whichever way you'd like to go.
Well, the only, the only downside to that is, doesn't matter who you talk to, they're gonna try to base it on somebody that's around you, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
But again, our county, sorry.
No, but if you base it on your own, though, we were lower than everybody else. So if we base it on our own, what, you know, what is it gonna be, or, you know what I mean, that's, that's part of the problem they had. But as we discussed in the budget workshop, the only things Evergreen was ever tasked with by this board was to try to make sure we handled compression that we already had and getting everybody $15 an hour by a certain date. You know, that's, people have tried to make it be more than that, and it's, they never were approved to do more than that.
And gives them the opportunity to explain in more detail to you guys exactly how they came up with this formula that they had. What, what counties did they use? You know, you guys might get a better understanding. I'm not saying you agree with them, but at least you get a better understanding of how they did and why.
Well, I'm good with any discussion about, you know, if the board is unsatisfied, we, we make our decision as a unit, we're not individual, you know what I mean, just individual members, we make our decisions together, so I'm good with that.
Mr. Chairman, I know you, I think you're the only one of those three that was there during the time. And I'm not critiquing or criticizing what y'all did back at that time, but it sounds to me like the commission kind of twisted Evergreen's arm in a way.
We did.
And said, this is what, this is the way we want it done.
Well, the biggest, the biggest twist that happened, Commissioner Amison, and I'll be honest with you, was the whole time they were doing this for us, the whole time, and it'd been consistent if it'd have been somebody else, was we were supposed to fund it in one year. And it was over, it was 1.2 million.
1.5.
We had to raise the military rate to do that.
1.2 to 1.5.
So that's where the kind of quandary come in, when the board started having discussions of breaking it down and making it a three-year plan, and then a five-year plan, so we could slowly implement it. That's where the big problem come in. Because if you done all in one year, we would still be talking about the same things. We're done with that, we're done moving on to Cincinnati, you know what I mean?
With the higher military.
Yes. But that, that five, making a one-year plan a five-year plan has caused all the problems, to be honest with you. All right, so we haven't voted on it, have we?
No.
We have not.
All right, but we do have a motion and second.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor? Any opposed? That is unanimous.
Item four, Commissioners, early this year, the board discussed creating an on-call policy, especially for employees that are called out for non-disaster emergencies. Attached to my report is an email on two on-call policies for your review, how the board choose to proceed. Commissioners, these policies were created by your, by your labor attorney.
Yes.
Not by a company like Evergreen. Interesting conversation, Commissioner Ward called me yesterday, she, very good point, she's like, well, if we're looking at an Evergreen or a company like Evergreen, should we not task them with that, as they're looking at this comprehensive overall look? I agree with her wholeheartedly, Commissioner. So we can, so you guys can discuss it more, I would recommend, we defer it until after we talk to Evergreen and ask them about it when they're here.
Well, the other thing, too, Mr. Moreau, that I want to make sure, I would like to make sure we consider, whichever way we go with it, just given what, what was presented by the labor attorney. There was some other language he had, and I'm trying to find it real.
Part is his email, probably.
Yeah, the explanation.
Yes.
So, one of the other things that he did highlight, and I thought it was very good, was in our current policy, there's a thing for, that kind of dings employees for health insurance, that can't be on call if they're not eligible for health insurance, and it also provides for an employee who required to work for a paid holiday shall be allowed in the future to take two hours of holiday paid leave for every hour worked on the holiday. So we either need to amend that and take that out, if we can go with an on-call policy where we're gonna potentially pay them, you know, so much per hour for being on call, especially if they come in and work, we, we don't need to have both going on.
Okay.
You know what I mean, they don't need to get paid and get, get time, I guess is what I'm saying.
Okay.
So that, that was my only thing to add to the discussion.
Yeah, and being eligible for health insurance, that's probably triggered by whether or not you're a full-time employee or a part-time, because part-time hourly you would pay for all.
But when we go to do it as far as our personnel side of our policy, we need to make sure that's as clear as it can be, is all I'm saying. But, go ahead.
You go ahead.
I was gonna say, I'm fine with what Commissioner Ward has communicated to you to recommend to somebody else to look at it, because when I first looked at it, I seen anything that mentioned a dollar. I'm like, yeah, no, this was not done by somebody that's.
Yeah, that, that's.
So you're saying attorneys are a little concerned?
No, I didn't say anything like that, sir, not at all. But I was like, uh-uh, that didn't work.
Mr. Chairman, that was my, my point I was gonna make, is I'll be honest with you, I'm, I'm, I'd rather not be on call than be tied down to the area for a dollar an hour, or, I mean, that's insane, who would want to do that? I'd rather not take call. There's some people not wanting to take call.
No, and, and if I remember right, the direction that the board gave to even approach this and adding it to our policies of speakers was to add an incentive for people to call.
Yeah, exactly.
Not just, we're gonna give you.
Not a punishment.
That's the key word.
Incentive. So do we need board action to, I guess, add this to Evergreen's?
In my notes, I'm just gonna put defer until after Evergreen's presentation, and you guys could question Evergreen about it.
All right, so we'll just table it for now, then?
Yep, basically.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, item five, another personnel-like policy. Currently, you have a policy that allows for transfer of sick leave between employee in cases of emergency or hardship. In other words, if employee's out for some reason, sick, they run out of a sick time, anybody with a balance of sick leave can donate that sick time between county employees. I would like the board to consider adding the transfer of comp time leave to this policy. It would allow employees with available comp time, Erin and myself, basically, to donate that, that leave to employees that may need it due to unforeseen health situation, especially, I'll be honest with you, like with COVID reasoning, it's ugly head again, especially here in the community, you know, we have some employees out, and I just, you know, I can, I donated sick time recently, I could, I could do that, but so much, but I have this comp time I would love, I'd prefer to donate and lose it, to be very honest with you.
Well, Mr. Chairman, not only with COVID, but we had a, was he Solidways employee that got burned in an accident, and he had to have a certain amount of time off, and Mr. Davis had to come before the board to get, ask for help with that, so.
Yes.
I'm all for this, I'll, I'll make a motion to amend the leave donation policy.
And I will get the, the labor attorney to actually write the language for us, Commissioner.
So we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Amison. I do have a question or discussion. The only thing is, and I think it's other language needs to be clarified, do we currently allow you, you personally, to use your comp time for leave?
Yes.
See what I'm saying?
Yes.
Because if you can't personally do it, then how can you give it to somebody else to do it?
Yes, yes. Actually, the preference is, it should be, if I have to take leave and I have a balance of comp time, I should be using that first before I touch my, my vacation or sick leave. That's, that's the preference that it'd be done.
But I'm saying that, right now, if you, if you're out of sick leave and you get sick, can you use your comp time for your sick leave?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's what I was gonna clarify, okay.
Yes.
Because if that's not in place, we'd have a hard time doing it for you to give it to somebody else.
Yes, yes. Actually, I love the example of the clerk. The clerk's example is, she just has all her time in one bucket, and you use it, and
That's what I'm used to.
Yeah, me too, I only have one.
I kind of prefer that.
That's what I'm worried for, it was for the last couple of decades. It was your time period, it didn't matter what it was for.
If you, you would like, I could get, um, what's Leonard, Trevor? I can get Attorney Carson to, to look, bring that, both of those languages before you, and you decide which way you're gonna go.
Well, let's, let's proceed with what we have a motion on the table on the floor for.
Yeah.
But if, if we want to look at it, I'm fine with looking at it.
Okay, I'll have him do that, to, to look at.
Alright, any other discussion before we vote? All in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous.
No, sorry, we did six already. Seven. I mean, this Commissioner Ameson, probably could jump in here whenever he want. Couple of weeks ago, Commissioner Ameson and I, we met with Mr. Curtis Higgins, he's the dredge contractor there at Two Mile, about dredging around Buddy, Buddy Ward, also known as Lombardi Boat Ramp. Mr. Higgins approached the court about amending the current Two Mile dredge contract by reducing the planned dredge area on the eastern end by approximately forty-three hundred linear feet as he was pumping more water than sludge, which he said actually was a problem for him. He would then dredge that same linear feet area on the western end of the planned dredge area, which would result in a dredge area west of the boat ramp. This could be done at no additional cost to the county, believe it or not. No any showing issues on the eastern end of the channel. The court is asking for the county's approval of this amendment before proceeding. Commissioner Ameson may want to jump in here with any additional information before you make your motion. You may.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Um, just real quick, um, the map that we had was not the map. I don't know if, uh, that was the, the con, that was the, uh, permit map.
Yes.
The actual contract map that we hadn't seen didn't go to even where, I mean, you thought.
Oh, that's the same problem we were having earlier in East Point.
So, with, what, what, what it is, is, is down here on this, uh, east, or, you know, the east end of the channel, closer to the bridge, you've got a couple of spurs that come off of there. What he's gonna do is, he's gonna jump up there, knock those spurs off, or them little shoals that's coming out. The, the, the trade-off area is about, what, what'd he say, about four hundred yards, roughly?
Oh, yards, I thought linear feet, didn't I?
Forty-three hundred linear feet.
Oh, well, anyway.
Yes.
The way he explained it to me was, is over the last, what, sixteen years that say dredge lasts or whatnot, there's only accumulated about three inches of material there.
Yes.
So like he said, it's, it's kind of pumping water.
Yep.
We already at full capacity at Spool Site, which has been an issue. But the trade-off would be, it would, well, you know, you're, you're trading water for actually getting some material out of there. So it's, I mean, it, it works out perfectly, to be honest with you. I'm just giving y'all an update from our, our meeting, a little more, uh, from the contractor's perspective. Maybe him have talked again since then, so. But the update on that, uh, there it stands, because we're at full capacity with the, with the Spool Site, and they're waiting on some of this moisture and all to alleviate, when they can continue, so.
Alright. So, but nobody's made a motion to have that.
Not yet.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve the amendment.
I'll say it.
Alright, so a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Ameson. Any discussion? I will say this under discussion. Uh, after we get this settled, Commissioner Ameson, maybe we need to get you to talk to the people I've been trying to talk to. You seem to be more successful. Because I have completely the opposite problem in East Point. So there's material still left there, it's way more than three inches. And they're not, they've not done nothing but pump sludge, because we still don't have an island, but anyway.
Well, you have
Hidden highlights.
It's two different contractors.
Yes.
But with that being said, um, you know, it's, it hadn't been
Done a long time.
Well, I mean, you know, Moses was walking the earth whenever they dredged East Point.
Been a long time, sir.
Loud, I mean, it's, it's a little smoother of a transition in Two Mile, because it's been done. And I try to tell people that, it's like, basically, starting from ground zero.
Yes, it is. It is.
The, uh, yeah, I believe that contractor was a little over with it with that. And I believe that's also a shared opinion amongst others.
Yep. Alright, any more discussion before we vote? All in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous.
Commissioners, we've discussed in the previous meetings about the FDOT Highway Beautification Project that you guys applied for on behalf of the East Point Civic Association. They're seeking your approval on sign locations along Highway ninety-eight in East Point, and the adoption of a maintenance agreement for the signs. The Civic Association, I'm sorry, the East Point Civic Association will be responsible for the maintenance of the signs. Attached to my report is the plan, the plan proposal and a resolution and aesthetic feature agreement, all for your review, approval, and the chairman's signature. Just need the board action to approve location and style of the signs, and authorize the chairman's signature and the resolution and the supporting East Point Sign Program, the FDOT Community Aesthetic Feature Agreement.
Mr. Chairman, can you, if it's not too much trouble, just so the public can see it, can we put those
Pictures?
pictures up on the screen, please? Because I'd like the public to take a look at this. I know, a while back, I had talked about moving the sign, because it was, as we were talking about trees earlier, uh, it was blocking, uh, the field of sight pulling onto ninety-eight from Fourth Street.
Oh, yeah.
Is it Fourth Street? Yeah, Fourth Street. And, um, I contacted Mr. Rex Penny cuff of the East Point Civic Association, and he informed me that they were gonna be doing this, so, um, I think it's, they did a good job with whoever designed it.
I think it was a, a
Michelle.
back and forth between Ms. Michelle and presenting different designs to the East Point Civic Association.
Yeah, I think it looks great.
It is. It is.
Yep, thank you. And I think there's gonna be different ones, depending, that different
Location.
The, um, the design's gonna be different, depending upon the location of each sign, so.
There are. Different sizes, different design.
Yeah, I think that looks good.
And there's, there's like five different locations, so they're actually gonna put one potentially at Highway ninety-eight and sixty-five. And I'll put, move the one on Fourth Street a little bit. Put, put one back in the Y, down, that bottom picture that you see there, uh, where Taylor says their sign.
Does that help there?
Yes, sir.
Where it says the perfect location.
Yep, yep, and then there's one going down by the Family Dollar, and I think there's gonna be one as you come into East Point. So that'd be several of them.
Yep.
But, uh, you know, they, they're spending, so we did the beautification project on St. George Island, they were spending more money on palm trees and stuff, to spend the money. It was still about the same amount of money, but this is not gonna have as much, uh, shrubbery or vegetation, so that's why multiple signs. Uh, the only one we do have an issue with that I need to ask about here today is at Fourth Street, so what they're talking about doing is wanting to move it further away from the road and put it, uh,
On the sidewalk.
Who, who is our engineer of record for this stuff? Who is the engineer? Who's the person doing the?
We would have to check with the civic club with, uh, Ms. Benny Webb, to see.
The reason I'm asking that is because I was talking to DOT, to Mr. Benny Jacobs, because they had discussed with me, the civic club, about putting, uh, culvert somewhere, not in the middle of the ditch, but somewhere away from where it's at now, so they can move it and have it at an angle where it doesn't block the road. But like Mr. Jacobs told when I was talking on the phone, he said, Commissioner, he said, I can't just tell you to go put a culvert in the middle of a good ditch. He said, now, if you can get something where an engineer says this is where it needs to go, he said, you might get it approved. So, we run into a roadblock, is what I'm trying to say.
Okay.
Uh, so it needs, I don't know who's involved in that part of it, but if it involves anything, and I didn't know this, I talked to him yesterday. But if it involves putting another culvert pipe or something there, somebody else needs to weigh in on it, we can't just ask them to do it and then say, yeah, it's okay. That's what I was told.
So you want to prove it with that contingency?
I'm fine with it. I'm not trying to slow it down, and we've been over a year getting to this point, you know what I mean? But just know that that's something that we have to get ironed out before that sign will ever get up.
Okay.
You know what I mean? I'm fine with that, but.
So move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Ameson. Any discussion other than what's being discussed? All in favor?
Aha.
Uh-huh. All opposed? That is nobody. Alright, go ahead.
Okay, uh, item ten, you know, the boards aware of staff has been actively looking for new location for your building department, planning and zoning and administrative offices. The purpose of moving these offices would allow for the supervisor election office to move from its current location to the annexed location next door, which is now occupied by these three departments. The billing condition and size, in addition to the county paying rent, are some of the reasons that we've discussed about moving the supervisor elections from its current location. At a previous meeting, the board authorized staff to start negotiations, negotiations with a bill to suit developer for a location in East Point for three offices. Those negotiations are, they are ongoing, but another potential location has become an option. The building that was previously the Gulf State Bank Building East Point Branch, it's located on the corner of Highway ninety-eight and Island Drive, that is for sale. The asking price there is 1.17 million. Ms. Erin Griffith, Mr. Steve Patterson and I were able to tour the building, and we think it would be adequate for immediate use. A future addition to the building would create additional space for other uses. Preliminary talks with the realtor included possible negotiations. Would the board authorize staff and Attorney Schuler to negotiate with the billing owner, and based on those negotiations, secure a sales contract and get the two required appraisals? Yes, Commissioners, the county sell buys in a backwards manner. It's just how the state says we're supposed to do it. Attorney Schuler could explain the process to you if needed. Again, this is not, this is not the first purchase we're trying to do, but we, we just need to know something you guys are interested in.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I just want to say that I think the reason we're picking this is because y'all just can walk next door to Taco Bell and get
When it opens.
Taco Bell, here we go.
There we go.
I really think that's the ulterior motive here.
Yep, we stood on the porch of that building and saw the sign. Taco Bell is coming here soon.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I, I was out with Steve a couple of weeks back, and we were riding around in my district with some concerns, and he took me by this building, we couldn't go in it, I've been in it before, and he was explaining what the plans were, if this potential thing, if we get this. And I think it's a great idea, I think it's a good location, I think it's gonna suit, um, all the, all the, uh, things that we need. And I think the way it's, the floor plan of it is, will be beneficial in how the county conducts its business, because you got offices on each side, and there's a big opening in the middle, which I think, like I said, I think it's definitely gonna suit the county well if we can potentially get this. Just my opinion. So I'll make a motion to, um, proceed with, um, getting negotiations, I guess.
So, we have a motion on floor to approve. I want to ask a question if I can. So what we're doing is asking for them to give us a high and a low, so we can write up a contract and move forward and see where the appraisals land.
Yeah, or we could suggest a high and a low, and
Either way, that's what we're doing.
Yeah, and negotiate, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Now, are you going to wait until, uh, because, you know, Attorney Schuler's the one that really does the negotiations, wait until see they accept that high and a low before you authorize the sales contract and the required appraisals, or?
No, I don't think we need to.
All at once?
Yeah.
I mean, if the board is ready to move forward with purchasing, we have a
Well, this building
Did we get a second?
No, you just seconded it while you were talking.
Okay, just making sure.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman.
If the board's ready to move forward, do we just negotiate it, we come back to the board and, and the board will
Yeah, you just inform us of what the things are.
There's the chairman's signature on it or not.
Okay. Works for me.
But all you, as far as I'm concerned, all you're doing is authorizing myself and then staff to negotiate and bring something back to you. That's, that's all I'm reading.
That's all it's about, gee.
Yes.
And that's how, that's how I understood it to be.
Especially with two Commissioners not being here.
Yes, makes sense, sir. You're right.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Ameson. Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, uh, eleven, and I'm not even gonna read this, so FDT, FDEP sent us a notice approving the docs that we were fussing about not too long ago, uh, down there. I mean, I, I, and since, since then, say again?
Down there.
Oh, down there, my bad.
Yeah.
Terrible with directions. So I get lost in freaking Walmart parking lot, so yeah. So, um, yeah. So I just kind of wanted to let you guys know I've attached the permits, I'm not sure if there's much we can actually do.
No, they already put
Stand here and, and just get more, you know, get angrier and angrier, but, you know, I don't
I just am surprised, Mr. Chairman, I'm just surprised that they allowed it. I, I, it blows my mind. It, this is gonna be a danger, I'm sorry, I see a potential issue. And I just want the public to know that it's not this board's action, we tried to prevent it, but obviously FDOP, FDEP supersedes us, so. What's someone say about that?
Yeah.
Is there, there's not any action for us there?
Nope, really any action.
I didn't think there was, but it said possible.
Yeah. Item twelve, at discussing your budget workshop, the building and zoning department will share, will share funding and responsibilities for a vacant approved position in the building department's budget. Board actions needed to approve advertising for this position. This position is already in the billing department, we've just decided to split funding and responsibilities to provide a backup for Courtney and zoning, uh, and especially when she's doing more complaints, and that's getting to happen more and more often, uh, so we just want to advertise for that position.
Mr. Chairman, I got a, a, well, let me ask a question first. The position, I know you said it's already there, the building department can pay for the employee, correct? The salary?
Yeah, well, it could pay for half.
So how does that work? Like, do we have to per Florida statute, uh, have, break that down? Or are they gonna be really, really, I don't know, eyes on us, because we have an employee? Because the zoning, we can't pay with the building department funds.
Correct.
So how do they determine how mu, how many hours, say, are we paying this employee with building department funds versus zoning funds?
I don't think they're, I don't think they're breaking down the hours.
I, I, I'll make sure in the job description explains has, you know, that they do require to do some billing department stuff, and from there we go. They've never come down and, and, you know, and checked to see.
I just don't want to get the county in a bind when the building, the floor, the whoever comes down and says, well, you're paying this employee X amount of dollars out of building department funds, but how much zoning work is this person actually doing? You see what I'm saying? I just don't want to get the county in a bind like that.
I, I think we're good with a good job description, and, and we'll go from there.
Okay.
And honestly, Steve and I have talked about it, at, as we approach next year's budget, we're gonna let you know whether that person should be all zoning or all building department. By then, we'll, we'll, we're kind of testing the waters to see how it will work out.
Okay, I'll, uh, make a motion to approve that.
I'll say it.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Ameson. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous.
I'll try to speed up, Commissioners, can't read as fast as Aaron, as you can tell. Um, so we have a, you know, Ms. Patty Collins gone, we have a vacant District One member for the local technology planning team, I'd like to run an ad, because Commissioner Jones has tried in his recruitment, he's not as good as a clerk in getting somebody to fill VAB like she did this morning, so he'd like to run, run an ad to see who's interested.
I'm gonna cover it. Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ameson, second by Commissioner Ward. Uh, all in favor?
Aha.
Uh, any opposed? That's unanimous.
They got, they got big shoes to fill, sorry.
Yep.
I'm just saying, they got big shoes to fill.
And, and, and before you move on, we have some, some good stuff to discuss about that person. Conversations I had when we were down at the fact conference. So I was able to talk directly for about forty-five minutes with the company that they contracted over in Madison and Monticello. The, the, they did a co-op. They are, they actually were able to do an MOU with Duke Energy and run the broadband on the power poles to get it to houses instead of burying cable. And they have residents that have a hundred, a hundred access, hundred up, a hundred down for forty-nine, ninety-nine.
That's what I'm talking about, son.
So, uh, connects on. So we need to get this board member back on here, we need to move forward and see what else we can explore.
Yeah, you know, it was Fortnite, my grassing could play with a hundred, what was it, a hundred up?
A hundred, a hundred, so high.
Yeah.
But, uh, anyway, they're, they're interested in, and they know they need to have a discussion with the local technology planning team.
Okay.
So we got that waiting and, and ready to have that conversation.
Alright, um, did we vote?
I don't know if we did or not.
I have a vote.
You do?
Okay, that's all that counts, when you have it.
Yep.
Um, item fourteen, same thing, I need to, uh, advertise for the Byway Management Authority, which oversees the scenic byway. So I just need to, I like to run both ads at the same time, that's all I'm asking for. And you, you guys saw the letter, that they, they're requesting one.
So move.
Alright, motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Ameson. All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Commissioners, don't look at me cross-eyed here, but unfortunately it's come to this, you know? Due to some recent tragic events regarding individuals jumping from our bridges. Commissioner Ward, she would be proactive, I like her for that, would like the board to consider adding signage to our bridges. Overpasses warning individual, "Don't jump." You know, um, I know it seems silly, people are laughing, but I'm sorry.
Well...
They're jumping, and so I would, I, I hear, I think if we put up a sign, it, it just, you know? Whatever it's worth, it just, the county has done all we can do.
I think it's a good idea, and honestly, here's the thing. If people don't know, they don't know. There's areas in our bay that the water moves very rapidly. It might not look like it from the surface, but you better know where you're jumping into.
Yes.
Uh, 'cause it ain't gonna end the way you want it to.
There's bars.
Chairman, another thing, too, the depth.
Yeah.
People go out there, there's bridges they're not from here, and they're fishing off of it, and they think they got twenty foot down there and stuff. And in some areas, you probably got five or seven.
That's right.
The most.
That's right.
You jump from that height, and you can break the leg back, I mean, it's... I'll second the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I can't, um, sorry.
You did make a motion, didn't you? He's seconding it already, so...
I just used to have him second everything here.
I'll make, I, I, I'll make a comment, though, if y'all don't mind.
Okay.
Uh, this actually was not my idea, I had been contacted by Captain Hammond's Sheriff's Office.
Okay.
And I think it was, uh, I guess them working the accidents that we've had. I guess it's, and, and I appreciate him being diligent about it, too, because, again, it's, I don't want anything liability-wise coming back to the county to say, "Hey, well, we didn't know it was, you know, we didn't know we couldn't jump, we jumped." I mean, how many of us jump from the railroad tracks up here on the river, you know? We just, you just don't know, and these people from out of town...
You never told me that story.
How has it done that?
So, let me ask you a question then.
Whoa.
Are we talking about putting these signs, like on the East Point Fishing Pier and the San John Fishing Pier?
Yeah.
Because that's the only place you have pedestrians anywhere.
Yeah.
You don't have one on the Central Dollar Bridge.
I don't know, I saw somebody on that political bridge the other day.
Well, we can't put signs on that F D O T bridge.
No, no.
Well, I'm talking about, yeah, without F D O T.
We're just talking about like signs as you walk up on the fishing pier, it's just that one time, and you know, if you didn't read the sign, you jump, you know, you're...
Right, okay, I'm just clarifying, yep.
Yeah, I mean, wherever you guys, if you guys could send me emails, hey, where you want the signs, because I, I gotta put in an order with, with, with Higgy and Howard, you know, to get the signs.
Okay. Yeah, I'm good with that. Any more discussion before we vote on Commissioner Ward's motion and Commissioner Amson's second? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Item sixteen, uh, this is probably what the chairman was talking about, I should have brought up when David was here. At your June twentieth meeting, Mr. Brian Hall of Corrigs and Ingram presented Weems audit. During the presentation, the board asked Mr. Hall for financial information on the county's emergency medical services department. Mr. Hall called me back, he's asking for specific direction regarding this request. Based on our conversations, here's what I think you're asking for. It appears that the board wants a financial breakdown of the EMS service as a department of Weems, as they currently are. And then you also wanted an estimated financial breakdown as the possibility of EMS being a possible county department. Am I correct, before I give further direction to Mr. Brian Hall? Is that what you guys are asking for, basically?
Mr. Chairman, I would, I would go so far as to say, I would like to see a breakdown between the hospital, the clinics, yeah, in the EMS. I mean, that way, you get, it's all lumped together, so we really don't know the financials on that. I mean, what, where's the money, where are we generating money, where are we losing money?
Okay.
You know?
But Commissioner Amson, as far as the county department, would you also want the clinic, numbers on the clinics for that, too?
No, I was just referring to the...
Okay, as they currently are, okay, that works. Okay, that works for me, that's all I was asking.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I can say that the EMS is not a money-making department by any means. Um, but I'll, I'll go ahead, do we, do we need a motion?
No, I just see it as a direction, that's all. I just want to clarify what you guys are asking for, I'll call them, I'll call Brian back tomorrow, let him know. If there's no more comments in this, I'll move on to seventeen. Speaking of hospitals, probably another item the chairman might have been talking about this morning. As the board is aware, land management contract expiration date is approaching, I would like the board to consider the creation of a committee that would include uh your chairman, Commissioner, Chairman Jones, uh, the chairman of the hospital board, Duffy Harrison, David Walker, Mike Kozar, and I'm drafting Erin Griffith, and myself, to discuss uh terms for renewal. Basically, let's start to hash this out. While that's going on, I would also suggest, and Mr. Kozar really wants to do this, he approached me twice, him and Mr. Walker to meet with each of you individually, to Higgy individually, what are your concerns, what you'd like to see. Basically, we bring all that back to the table, and at some point, a draft is presented to you for you as a board and a public meeting to kinda hash out and move forward. But we need to start that sooner rather than later, as that contract ending date is quickly approaching. And I just, I wanna make sure you guys are good with that. Not sure if we, I guess we're forming a committee, so yeah, motion would, would, would be good.
So you just want a motion to form the committee?
Yes.
Uh, I'll make the motion that we form this committee.
Second.
Motion approved by Commissioner Amson, second by Commissioner Ward. Is there any discussion, Commissioners? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, um, ethics class, so unfortunately Attorney Jennifer Shuler cannot come down on a Saturday to teach the class, other commitments, so you guys have two choices. One, uh, I can register you individually, you can do it on your iPad at your own time, your own convenience. And/or I can uh stream the F A C Ethics Four Hour Training here on a Saturday, where everybody come down, or the ones that want to would come down and, and take the class at that time. Either/or, you guys just let me know and I'll, I'll work that out. But I just wanna let you know that unfortunately Attorney Jennifer Shuler is unable to come down and teach the class.
I think it'd be good to do on a Saturday, but we need to prefer to people's schedules and see what's best for them.
Yes.
I can make any Saturday work for me, but we also have two Commissioners that are not here.
Yes.
That's what I was gonna say, Mr. Chairman.
I'll reach out first and say we wanna do it on Saturday as a first uh preference, and then after that, if they can't, then I'll have to register them individually. Cool?
Yes, and Commissioner Ward, you do weeks on your schedule, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
But I can do a Saturday.
I know, but, so start with that, if you would, find out what Saturdays are good for her, and then see what the other Commissioners think about it from there.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
All right, cool. Uh, nineteen, so your RV camper ordinance status, I'm, I'm not gonna read this, I just wanna know what, what, what's the next step? Where do we go? Because we've, we've been through some workshops, you know, Attorney Shuler did, did a job because it had a very comprehensive um ordinance that he did. Some people thought it was too much, so where, where do we, where do we go from here?
Um, Mr. Chairman, in discussion with this, I've got two more things to add, but we'll, we'll work on this first. I think that in talking with county staff, I like the hardship, and I think that's the only route we can go with this if we have a hardship. Because otherwise, we are gonna have a homeless problem in our community, and I don't want that. Um, I don't, you know, I understand we have to take into consideration people that are abusing it, so we need to have stiffer language, stiffer penalties. Um, basically, what I've got from that workshop was, you know? I've got some ideas, and I was gonna meet with Attorney Shuler before this meeting about it, but I wanted to hear the discussion here today. But I've got everything written down that I would like, I don't know if we should, um, I don't know if a... Because a public hearing, you have to actually take it on and do it, I don't know if a workshop's gonna ma- uh, make a difference anymore either, because we workshop, we could workshop it to death.
Yes, we can.
So, um, I mean, I've got changes on there, I, I know that he's, Attorney Shuler's also met with county staff on it. So I don't know what the final was, did we decide, we, we didn't have the hardship in there before, did we?
Commissioner, the ordinance that I drafted had no exceptions, in fact, um, perhaps I misunderstood my instructions from the board, but I tightened the ordinance up and made it very restrictive, and uh, there are, you know, arguably some enforcement gaps in the nineteen, what?
Eighty-two.
Anything like that. The forty-year-old ordinance that I plugged up and removed, so it would be more easily enforceable. And the, the, the reaction from the board was you did not like that approach, that you wanted to look at alternative methods. So I've just been waiting for additional instructions from the board on, you know, what your policy decision is going to be.
Yep, so I, I think it's gonna, regardless of what we do, I think it's gonna take us an amount of time that we need to maybe discuss, be that three months or whatever, to actually implement a program. Uh, because I, I agree with what the Commissioner's saying, that you, you can't... We don't need to make everything an exception, but at the same time, there are residents that are living in RVs, that had been living in RVs, and we can't just overnight by a stroke of the pen make all of it illegal. That, that, that was the one thing I kinda had an issue with. Now, whether we want to say the hardship is a waiver that you get annually, and, you know, it's, whatever we have a... Like they do with the license uh plate tags, decals. This year's yellow, next year's red, I mean, you know what I'm saying? They go from January first to December thirty-first, some kind of deal with that. Uh, I, I do think we do need to make a hardship consideration, however, that does not mean that we should be okay with any RVs on any of our barrier islands because of hurricane concerns. And we definitely shouldn't have any rental spaces that are RVs, because they're not on commercial property. They're residential property. Uh, you know what I mean, but, so those are just some of my thoughts on it. How, how, you know, does that get us anywhere closer to actually drafting an ordinance we can vote on? I don't know, but, you know what I mean? Uh, but I do know that, that, those are some of the things I think we need to consider and look at. But I do agree with Commissioner Ward, I, I'm not in favor of having ten more workshops. I think when we get to a point where we can pass it and call it a day. But it is gonna require something that we've never done before, and that's a lot more coordination, maybe, than we've ever had from the policy and procedure we put in place, making sure it's clear enough and fair enough that it can be followed through. And it won't be, to the best of our ability, that it won't have fifteen unintended consequences by what, by our actions. So, you know, that's, that's a lot to consider, but those are some of my thoughts on it.
Yeah, and Mr. Chairman, it's been a while since I've read, read the ordinance, because we kinda put it to the side, but, um, you know, I, I do remember, recall, now that you mentioned the, the penalties, but the stiffer the better for the ones that aren't complying. My biggest thing is, I have, in my district, it's the worst, and I've got three campers or four campers on one piece of property. So we need to add that in some language, too, to say, "Hey, you know, you're only allowed one," you know, depending upon the hardship or how we go about that, we need to figure out a way to remedy that situation, too. Um, I know there was some discussion about changing the zoning from R one to R two, R two? But I'm not, I don't think that's a good, I don't, that's gonna be hard to do. Um, and I don't know if Courtney wants to come in and be part of the conversation either, but... I concur with the chairman, and the biggest thing for me was, was the, the stiffer penalties, which has been added, and then the hardship. But I agree with the chairman in terms of the hardship being on a time basis. So, you know, a year, they apply, they get it, next year they have to reapply. They could have a change in status, they can have, they can win the lottery or whatever, I wanna make sure that they are indeed a true hardship. And I know, then you ask the question, "Well, what's considered a true hardship?" I get that, too, but that's something that, you know, we, we need to determine, I guess, as well. So a lot of questions, more than answers, but that's, that's how, that's just my personal feeling.
So it sounds to me, what we're saying, you, individually, you guys sit down with your attorney and let...
I think that's a good idea.
Brainstorm with him and let him come up with something that he could summarize as best as he possibly can. Uh, based on all the different concerns you guys will have.
I think all of our concerns are pretty much gonna be the same, it's just a matter of hashing it out, how to implement them. And, um, yeah. And I'm gonna let you finish your report, but I've got something that goes along with that, so I don't know if you wanna do it now or do it...
Well, the rest of my stuff is informational, so that's, that's not a big deal.
It's been a long day, but, um, and I don't know if Courtney wants to come in and join on this conversation, too, but I, I didn't know, I was riding around with Courtney, and I rode around with Steve, and, and I rode around with Mr. Howard before, I need to do that again, but I, I get a lot of calls about drainage, especially with the rainstorms we have. And I didn't know that the re- I know we have like the stormwater improvement plans for our commercial properties and stuff. I always wondered why houses didn't have culverts in every, you know, there's no residential...
I'll go get Courtney while you do it.
Okay, there's no requirement, so I'm like, how come this house has a culvert, and then this house doesn't, and this house does? There's no continuity. So you got this guy with, with a culvert, and next door, the neighbor's getting flooded out, because they don't have, or the culvert from their, the rain from their culvert running on their property, and I just, I don't know, we, we need to... The whole county needs a stormwater management plan to... Because I even noticed, too, in some of the, the drainage pipes, the culverts, they're not big enough to sustain some of the water flow that we have when we get these rainstorms. Um, and it's not only my district, it's, it's all the rest of the uh districts as well. And then I've seen where, and I've got pictures where I went out last week and saw a culvert, it was a concrete culvert that was collapsed and undermined. So there's no water flowing under the road where it should go to the proper drainage, so it's causing flooding, but it's also causing possible undermining of our roadway systems. So we need to do something moving forward strategically to prevent issues from happening. So if we need to make a residential drainage, stormwater plan, just like we do for our subdivisions, and I know Mr. Mark Curran's in our land plan, I don't know if he wants to be involved in this conversation as well, but it's definitely something we need to look into.
Well, I know that there are, I believe I remember right, there are D E P or other entities that have different grant funding possibilities to address stuff like stormwater. The, we've gotta get the building block in place to know what we're trying to address, though. And we probably have to start with sections of an area, you know what I mean? You're, you're not gonna get them to approve them to do the whole thing at one time. But we do need to start with areas and make it work, because that repeatedly, and I know this sounds like a broken record, but the, some of the residents in my district, that's the issue, the bigger issue they have with some of the C four in the middle of the island is we don't require a stormwater plan. So all this stuff we're going through, that we're about to get ready to take out the bid here in September or so, for that four and a half million dollar stormwater plan for the middle of the island is a snapshot in time. Any new building is not being added into that equation. So, yeah, it's, it's kinda different that it, it's worked, it's been fine in the past, but we're starting to have growth management problems. So we have to address them. Yet, we've never had that before for residential property, but we've also never had the issues we have.
Right.
And we've never really been really tied on people on their residential property for the amount of field they do on their property. But if you're gonna address stormwater, you gotta address field.
And that was my second one. Mr. Chairman, that, that was on my list, so that was the second one.
I read your list from way over here, and I wear glasses, I am good. But, uh, but I mean, you know, that, that's just, it's part and parcel. You're never gonna have one if you don't have the other. It's not gonna work that way. So, but yeah, I, I agree with all that.
So I don't know if we need to do, I mean, I know this is not...
Although, we didn't put it out there now, we just, we'll follow up with staff and have it put on the agenda, so we can try to take some action.
We've done a, uh, P and Z, I think we've done a, a field uh workshop, but I don't think we've done a county commission workshop.
Right, right, right. Yeah, that might be something we have to do for, so with, between field and stormwater, I think we can just try to address them both together.
Yes, I agree.
And a workshop probably the best way to approach that, to be honest with you, that way we can, people can come in the room, tell us what they think, and we're not making decisions based on what we are telling ourselves.
Yeah, I would recommend you put it on one of your upcoming P and Z meetings, get the P and Z board's opinion for that, to this, to the county.
We already have one for them.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah.
And then you schedule a workshop for them, yeah.
Well, the problem that Courtney and I have when we were out was the person that was complaining, was complaining because his yard was being flooded out, but it was a neighbor next door flooding his yard out, but we can't go on private property. Our county road department can't go on a private property to clear a culvert, or to look at a culvert, or to assess any kind of drainage issues. So then the, the, uh, citizens not aware of that, so it's frustrating for them. Ultimately, this problem fixed itself, because it was just a, a case of a clogged pipe, but again, it's, it's all about the field dirt, with he building up his property and flooding the neighbor out, too. So I think they're both, like Chairman said, they both go hand in hand, but we definitely, moving forward, need to address all that stuff.
The complaints we get is, "Why did you allow this new person buying this property to flood my property?" That's, that's the complaint we basically get.
And honestly, though, Michael, some of the, some of the issues we have is some of that field is being put on a property with a new build because of us trying to address stuff with the flood plan and with the insurance program, National Flood Insurance Program. They're required to build at certain height, but that, that doesn't take into account that their neighbor's five foot lower than they are, and gets a bit, they have a pond, the neighbor. So, I mean, that, that, it, it becomes an issue.
Okay, good.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, item twenty, uh, T D C Collections, you can talk to John if you have any questions, Mr. Food Network Movie Star. The, no, the wig zone signage, I've sent you the information, I've gotta thank John Creamer, he was, he was quick, quick in the draw. He got me in touch with Ms. Grimes of F W C Voting and Waterways Division, I've sent you guys that information. Uh, I know Commissioner Sanders is one of the ones that had an issue, too, so I would say you guys look over that information, let me know how we're gonna move forward with that. Any questions, let me know, Ms. Grimes says she'll be happy to talk to either, any of us or all of us at the same time, just let her know. Um, the, tomorrow, no, Thursday, Thursday, Erin and I and Tracy, we're scheduled to meet with Ms. Tingle, Division of State Fire Marshal Grant Specialist, about our funding for the Saint George, I'm sorry, Saint James Leonard Village new fire truck. Uh, could be able to come back at the next meeting with more information, and probably some action for us to move forward, that truck. Uh, Triumph Meeting, I put the notice in there, and the agenda's gonna be on their website prior to the meeting. Uh, uh, T D C's handling, as usual, our F A C calendar contests, Skyline of the Sunshine State. Uh, F A C Rural County Days is coming up, I've sent you that, um, that F A C email. Uh, FAC Rural County Days is coming up, I've sent you that, um, that FAC email. Let me know if you want the county to participate in that. And your next meeting is August fifteenth at nine, and I do believe Attorney Schuler schedules some five o'clock public hearings that he had to reschedule due to July.
Four.
Four, four then.
Only four.
Yeah, only four.
Well, technically, one workshop and three.
Three probably, yes, yes.
But I'm optimistic they're all scheduled five minutes apart.
There you go, there you go.
Oh, I'm not kidding, yeah.
Yeah, so, very optimistic. And that, Commissioners, ends my report.
Okay. This weight zone signage, is that referring to, where is this referring to? Is that at the cut or where are we talking about?
Well, if you're looking at information, we have two permits now, and you were talking about a cut. They think that might be a new one, it includes the process as to how to go about to get a new one. So, I, I kind of wanted, you guys have all the information, and we go from there.
What'd you have, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman, I've got something for Mr. Morong. I actually have a lot of stuff for you, but it's some of the stuff we can meet.
Okay.
But there's, uh, obviously, since this is the only time we can talk about things, uh, Captain Ham also reached out to me about the benches that are in East Point. There are five, and they have been getting complaints of homeless people, certain individuals, um, camping out on them, graffitiing them. I just wanted, it's in your district, but I just, I'm like, I'm not gonna go rip up the benches just because you got people, you know, who's to say that, you know, regular individual don't go? Which they say, well, no, nobody actually uses those benches, but, um.
We've already moved several of them to other places. You know, because they're, you know, but no, none of them's talked to me about it.
Yeah, I'll have them reach out.
No, nobody at all.
I just don't know what, how everybody feels about.
There's benches that were actually put in place before I got on the permission.
Yeah, they've been there a little while.
The problem, the issue we have, especially on East Point, is we don't have a defined downtown like Appalachian Caravelle. So, they, they seem to be just benches in the middle of nowhere kind of thing, you know what I mean? That's really is an issue.
Well, I could, I think I have the history on this one, Attorney Schuler could help me out. I believe, um, people wanted benches there because they, they were using the path to exercise, and there were some older people and they wanted a spot to rest every so often. I think that's what started the benches in East Point. You're looking at me like you don't remember that at all?
Well, they did them all over the county, they did them.
Okay.
Because there's some on the island too.
Yeah, so, I think, that's what I remember about the ones in East Point, that's why they were there.
I think the ones on the island get vandalized like crazy.
Yeah, and they've, they've moved a couple times, you're, a few times, you're right, sir, you know.
But I have no issue with, with moving completely if we're not gonna get this drawback from residents saying, why did you take the benches, you know what I mean?
Yeah, that's the issue.
And that, that was my concern to Captain Ham was, well, what about the ones that actually want to use the bench, you know? And so, that's why I wanted to bring it up for discussion.
So, any of them are a problem, let's just remove that one and then go from there. I can tell you, funny enough, so several years back before you were on the board, I tried to move one from one spot to another.
Not gonna happen.
Well, now, I had people that lived by the other one saying, hey, I don't want this bench here. I had five or six different property owners saying, why does that bench moved here? Well, it's right by the sidewalk, well, I don't, I don't want anything associated with what's with that bench. So, it's, it might, it's just a common problem.
Mr. Chairman, I, I was only impressed you can't just go move them, because they, I guess, are concrete. It's not like you just go.
Oh, you can't probably just go out and move them like me and you move them kind of do, but they can be moved, I assure you.
Yeah, okay, I'll, I'll have Captain Ham reach out to you.
Yep, that'd be fine.
That's it. The rest of the stuff I can meet with you behind closed doors. I just wanted to have an open discussion.
Mr. Morong, do we have, seems like we probably had in, in a past, I don't think we actually discussed it in the meeting. There's a September meeting for FACT, have we already done anything to approve anything for that? As far as traveling going, or if we don't, we need to do it by the next meeting?
Yeah, okay.
Because I will say that, uh, so Commissioner Ward.
The policy.
Yes.
Policy and procedure.
Commissioner Ward, even though she might not be able to go to this particular meeting, is now your representative on the FACT Board of Directors for this Senate District. That happened at the last meeting. Uh, COVID now, she still was able to get voted into that seat. Uh, so, and I'm on a couple of two or three different policies, and I got a phone call the other day from the current president, I've actually been given one of the at-large seats on the same Board of Directors. So, now Franklin County actually have two on the Board of Directors.
So, we should get everything.
So, we should get everything that's coming our way, but anyway. So, some of us will need to be attending that meeting, we need to actually have that.
I'll have Courtney go ahead and just make arrangements, and I'll bring it up at the next meeting, okay?
And that's, that's all I have. Anything else for Mr. Morong before we proceed? All right, Attorney Schuler?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Go ahead.
Courtney's got very green inside his face.
You got the floor, sir.
Nah, we're fine.
We got plenty of time. We're, we're moving on borrowed time right here.
I got all day, I mean, I ain't got nothing else to do tonight, I mean.
I cleared today, because I figured we were gonna be here till seven o'clock anyway.
We just don't want to get dinner.
Grayson's gonna scale that long.
Grayson's ready to go.
Thank y'all for your patience, by the way.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, the first item on my report is the Buddy Ward Reef Patches F and G, uh, requesting that the board consider and approve a Florida Artificial Reef Materials Cargo Manifest, a pre-deployment notification. The attachment to my report indicates that we're going to fill out as the permit holder for the Buddy Ward Reef Patches F and G, a certification that the materials being deployed are consistent with the permit. Mr. Morong is your authorized representative to sign on behalf of the board once you consider and hopefully approve this request. Uh, since Mr. Morong and I, I'm, I'm fairly confident have the exact same level of knowledge concerning reef materials.
Exact same, I like that.
And Mr. Grayson Shepherd to be here to answer any questions that you might have. Um, and I do appreciate your patience and very much hope. Mr. Mudd, I believe, traveled from out of state to be here?
I was here, I was already here.
Well, I was giving you.
I did travel, but.
That's how important this project is.
I'm having a layover.
Oh, there we go. But, uh, my understanding is that timing is of essence for this deployment. So, I just, I didn't want there to, I've asked him to be here, but I didn't want to take a chance that there be questions that I, I'm not able to answer, and then y'all table it and somehow it creates a problem. Uh, and the timing, I think, is even more important because FWC is co-locating, uh, reef materials to the City of Carabel's Reef Project as well. So, they are here to answer any questions you may have. Uh, my understanding, just from, now, I'm gonna speak for you gentlemen, so if I misspeak, correct me. Um, just from the email communications back and forth, the, these materials are pre-certified as consistent with the permit by FWC. So, that being said, we are recommending that the board approve this, uh, manifest cargo and authorize Mr. Morong to sign it and date it with today's date.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm sorry you had to travel out of state, Mr. Mudd, because I don't have any questions. Um, I'll make a motion to approve this.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward and second by Commissioner Amerson. Any further discussion?
I do want to add just one thing, you guys.
Yes, sir.
Uh, we're also looking at another permit, it's gonna be thirty miles out. It's gonna be called the Franklin County Thirty Mile Reef. It's out by the Exxon Temple and the S Tower, if you're anybody familiar with that. It's gonna kind of be a co-location between Appalachian Cola and Carabelle. So, in the future, and this has been a two-year permitting process we've been going through. Franklin County will be the permit holder on that also. It's roughly a quarter of a mile wide by half a mile long, and we're taking extra steps to get it cleared for a vessel. Vessels can be sunk there, possibly shrimp boats or something like that, but something really cool in need for fishermen and divers, but it will help, it'll benefit the entire county.
Yes.
Yeah, Buddy Ward Reef is just right out here, close out from the cut. But this other one will be a, a much bigger location, and that'll be down the road, but I'll be coming back to you guys for, you know, we'll need stuff signed for that also, but that's in the future.
Sounds good. Thanks, Mr. President. Yes, sir. Yes, sir, okay. Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Uh.
All opposed? That's unanimous. It's approved.
Thanks, guys.
Uh, item number two and three are related, but I would like to handle them separately, even though they're on the same subject matter of the airport. Uh, after the board's approval of the, uh, the Randolph Hangar lease and the FBO lease at your June sixteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting, there was some discussions about some additional amendments being considered, uh, to those two leases. Um, the only items that I think are, uh, agreed to by Centric are the ones that are reflected in my report. Uh, for the Randolph Hangar, uh, there was, if you remember during the board meeting, we had sort of this live discussion, we were flying the, the planes, we were building it about, you know, an upstairs section that, that I think the airport manager was wanting to use, and then a section that EOC was using, none of which I had any idea about until the meeting that day. Um, Centric has come back and asked that in the event the EOC storage space is not, no longer used, that they essentially have a, an option to amend the lease, uh, and that they would then lease that space. I have, uh, calculated the amount of that rent, just prorated it based on what we're charging them now for the sixty by sixty. If they get additional twenty feet, that's an additional thirty-three percent, um, increase in the rent. And that means that they would pay an additional hundred and sixty-seven dollars per month. Uh, now, as far as I know, EOC doesn't have any plans to abandon that space, but that was, that was the ask, so.
So, I want to ask a question before we get started here.
Sure.
So, they want us to amend this on the potentiality that EOC is not gonna be using the space anymore?
That was their request.
But EOC is currently using the space.
That is correct.
So, why would we not be considering this when EOC has vacated the space?
They've asked for it to be brought up.
Okay.
I mean, I'm pretty fine with kicking the can down the road as well.
No, I'm not trying to keep tender, I'm just trying to understand what we're looking at.
And I've, I've had discussions with, uh, the director of EOC. Even if, and let's just, you know, wave that very one, um, EOC's somewhere else. Well, she's still going to have to have a potential area to stage. Now, with that being said, the argument can be made, well, what about the EOC building they have in now? Or, or they, they reside in now, and me and Mr. Morong's had that, and we do need to get, that was one of the things I was gonna mention you, we need to have a talk with Jennifer.
Okay.
Uh, but, but once they vacate that building, FAA takes that building back, and FAA has complete control over what can be utilized or done in that building. And there it goes again about being aviation related. So, it would be in our best interest to just not even worry with this because that's gonna be EOC until we can, unless we build them something else out there strictly for it. But there again, it's gonna have to be, you know.
Yeah, but even if, even when we build something new, wherever it's at, even if it's right down the street, that's not gonna remain her storage.
Well, whether the, uh.
FAA is gonna take that building when she vacates the other one right back.
The building, but this, this is off the Randolph Hangar. We're, we're, we're allowing them to store stuff there, and, you know, for future staging, because I, I spoke with Jennifer about that, and she said, even if I was somewhere else, I would still need my area for staging, uh.
Yes.
Out there, in, in case of a hurricane or anything for that matter. So, this is kind of just, I mean.
I, I actually, they're further away from the airport, they, they'll need that even more because if things come in to and from the airport, you know, they're accustomed to being there when it, when it, their supply. If they're not there, they need somewhere they can store it until they can get it, get access to it, yes.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm fine if that's what the board wants to take. I just, it drew a question for me when I was reading it last night about it. Because if it's, that's not me deciding when all my kids move out the house, I'm gonna do X, Y, Z, and I, I still got two of them there, I have three, so I mean, I, I can wait and do that when they're both gone, you know? That's, that's all that did make sense to me. But I'm, I'm just one of three today.
To not take an action on it?
That's up to y'all, y'all can do what y'all want to do, the, you know.
But it's not taking action's not gonna kick them out, is it?
No.
No, ma'am.
Okay, all right.
It's just not gonna give them the, EOC, it, it basically giving them the right to first refusal on it, is what they're wanting.
Well, I mean, that's not the way this is worded, but I'm, I'm fine with anything you want to do. I'm not trying to not do anything, uh, for them, you know, but.
Like I said, it is a mute point, let's just quiet, so, done with.
So, do we need to table this or deny it, or what do we need to do? How's it set up for us to do, sir?
Kind of make a motion to deny?
It's set up as a board discussion and possible approval, but if the board just says it's premature, then that, and that's sort of what I'm hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just don't take any action, I'll tell them that the, the board considers it to be a premature request and move on.
Okay.
Um, the next item is, uh, on the FBO lease, there was, again, some additional discussion about, you know, making some potential changes to the FBO lease. Um, the only, um, I guess, change that Centric would, uh, agree to was the issue regarding the amendment to the FBO lease to make sure that ramp area is, is going to be subject to the board's existing Duke Energy Emergency Staging Agreement. And that is the purpose of the proposed amendment, addendum actually, to the FBO lease.
But it's, Mr. Chairman, so.
Right.
But it, but it's, I mean, we keep saying the Duke, uh, energy, I mean, it could be anything, am I right, Mr. Morong? We, we had this discussion, a state of emergency is a state of emergency, it doesn't have to be directly related to Duke. And the language that we had in that, uh, um, does that, has that been changed or?
Does it specify the state of energy?
Because my memory is, we, we actually had, and I'm sure it's expired by now, we actually had a written, um, emergency staging agreement with Duke Energy at one point, I don't recall it coming up.
Yes, we renewed it.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mayor Joan, I brought it to the board.
But yes, the way it's written in, in the addendum, just so we're clear, says, the, the amendment would be as follows to the, uh, the June twentieth, twenty twenty-three FBO lease would be modified as follows, during a declared state of emergency, Centric and Franklin County agree that without limitation, Centric Aviation acknowledges that Franklin County has an agreement authorizing Duke Energy to stage equipment at the airport during emergencies, and understands that this lease is subject to the staging agreement, the terms of which are incorporated herein by this reference. If y'all want to expand that to just any declared emergency, then I'll make that amend there.
I, I think it needs to be a declared emergency, not, not just, I don't think we need to be amending the lease for Duke Energy. We're trying to amend the lease for us.
I took the language from the last FBO lease.
I understand.
Cut, cut it, face it, and put it on here, there's no reason it can't be expanded.
Well, I mean, the, the brush up that was so controversial, what was wrong with the language in it? That we, that, that, uh, me and the, uh, Chairman of the Airport Board brought to you?
Was it more general? I, I really don't remember, Commissioner Amson.
Let's fill it up right quick.
But there's no reason why it can't be broadened to just any declared state of emergency.
Yeah, I mean, we hope we don't have any emergencies, but I think it'd be better to either just leave the word Duke out, or you know what I'm saying?
I agree.
Just a declared emergency, you know, because you never know what's gonna hit us, so.
Because Duke was, Mr. Chairman, Duke was before Duke was sort of powered light, so they may change names, and then we have to go back and redo the contract.
Let's hope not, but yeah, it does happen, there every day, corporate America.
I can't find it here.
But the, uh, Chairman, I, I'm, I'm fine with it, I just, I think it needs to be a declared state of emergency.
Do you want to approve the addendum subject to that change being made? That would be the most efficient rather than waiting to come back.
I'm good with it, but I'm just here calling balls and strikes.
Yep, I would.
If Commissioner Amson's okay with it, I'm, I'm okay with it.
Yeah.
So, I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, so, a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Amson. Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
All right, uh, item number four, um, when I was delivering to FDOT's representative, and I can't remember her name, it's, I think it's Gigi something.
Yeah, Gigi.
She told me that there is an additional document that they would like for the board to, uh, execute. It's attached to the, uh, report. It's essentially a, a statement that, uh, the county is aware of the request from the FDOT for a easement. This was the easement that's just the other side of the Great Wall headed towards Carabelle Beach. And as you make that left-hand turn and move inland, there was a, a small section of land there that they wanted to install, basically, an erosion control device. Y'all already executed the resolution they sent, you've already executed the easement deed that they requested. But when I delivered those to the FDOT rep, they said they also would like to have this additional document executed. Um, and just for the record, says this is to advise that the undersigned owner of the property or property interest referenced above, and as shown on the right-of-way maps, desires to make a voluntary contribution of the land. Um, you acknowledge that you've been fully advised by a DEP or FDOT representative of your right to have the property or property interest appraised, to accompany the appraiser during the appraisal inspection and to receive full compensation. Um, why they didn't give this to me with the original package is an interesting question, but they're just checking off, I guess, items on a list, and this is the last one they would like checked off. So, I'm requesting board action to authorize the chairman to execute this acknowledgement that you have had a right to. that you have had a right to be compensated for the property, and you're voluntarily choosing just to donate without being paid.
So moved with comment.
Okay, a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
My second.
Second by Commissioner Amos. Please proceed, Commissioner.
And just for the board to be aware, Mr. Chairman, this is for the re resurfacing project along ninety-eight. They're, you know, we resurfacing that area, and they needed this easement to help accommodate, as Attorney Schuler said, for erosion control.
Yep.
It's county-owned land, so that's that's basically what this is about.
All right, any more discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
The next item is more, not necessarily a a action item unless that's what the board wants to do, but it is a a discussion to continue a a item that you brought up, I guess, a meeting or two back, about potentials, T D C funding of sports tourism. I don't, I've attached a lot of information to the report. I I don't really intend to go through that. The attachments are essentially some, basically, sports tourism information out of the Grove County where they actually have declared some sports arenas, or a sporting arena, which frankly, looks to me, if you look at it visually, it's just like any of the the part. I mean, it could be Ruben Park, you know, you could park here in Appalachia. I mean, that it looks a lot like our existing park, the whole point about attachment. And then the other one, although the board, I don't think has really talked publicly about having essentially sport or or swimming competitions, but that is also an eligible item for funding from T D C.
A quad.
So, so this is more just a, you know, put the issue out there, initiate a discussion, and see if the board wants to get it.
Mr. Chairman, I I I know that I've been passionate about this, and as everyone knows, Team Florida, I think they, the boys are mostly in my district, but they they did phenomenal. They lost the World Series, but they were able to go. Our our county has a lot of talented youth in it right now, and this is something, it's not only for the money that, I gave Commissioner Amos in the pamphlet, that Chairman Jones and I attended a seminar down south at our conference about sports tourism, and it's not just baseball, softball, swimming, it's it's also fishing, it's kayak.
Golf.
Golf. It's multiple things besides just, you know, your typical sports for for kids. It's it's sports for everybody, and I think that there's money to definitely be had. And I've talked to the T D C Director, John Solomon, about this as well. I mean, there's there's, I think it's a great idea, and I think that moving forward for our county is definitely something that we need to look into. We have a vast array of certain, you know, different items that we could, we have, you know, waterways, we have, we're we're kind of unique when it comes to things like that, so that's just my my thought on it. So, I'm all for this. I I'd like to see us have a big sports, like I said, up wherever to, with a with all kinds of sports, tennis, you know, swimming, everything for our kids, not only for our youth, but for our adults alike, you know, that enjoy those things.
And for our visitors.
And for our visitors, that's right.
Well, no, that, it is it is really the next step in in tourism promotion. Guys, there's a lot of money made in sports tourism. It is not a small amount. I don't know how much you're, you guys have ever been associated with anybody you're kin to that do, like, travel ball and stuff. These people are throwing down some serious money to be able to go and travel and do what they're doing with their kids, and it is, it's simply, and it's not just baseball or softball. I had a son that was in travel basketball for two years. That was about all I could afford, two summers. That was more than enough.
I can tell you this, we did travel baseball for three years, and finally, whenever we stopped, I was trying to figure out, I couldn't recollect if I gave myself a raise or what.
Yes.
Because I was like, where did all this money come from? But that's where, I mean, they, he's right. They they dump money, especially baseball. Baseball's, and and not just that, but it impacts all the local restaurants and and whatnot. That's why I'm I'm with, there's been some people with Parkinson's, that's reached out to me about potential doing some day tournaments, especially like over at Kendrick. You know, those day tournaments, we might not have the facilities to 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 put put a head in the bed, but just that day of them being here would would be a shot in the arm to a lot of the little local eateries and whatnot. So, it's it's, there's a lot of potential. And going back to to being in Orlando at the convention, that was the one workshop I wanted to go to, and I was down and out, but I'm glad you guys went to that, because I believe that's the one that I think could really help us out in this area quite a bit, especially since we're trying to figure out a spending plan for our T D C, or we're going to come up with that spending plan. Maybe this will be something we can we can interject into that and.
Yeah, well, I I don't know what the board's comfortable with trying to decide today or make a vote on today, but I can tell you, sir, that the T D C board's already weighed in on doing something with sports tourism, and it's up to this board to make the legislative finding that we want to take our our three that we currently have and treat them like a a sports arena. So, because T D C, so the uses allow for extending, enlarging, remodeling, repair, improving, maintaining, operating, and or promoting, and and, you know, so we can add to the facilities we have, but that's a legislative finding this board has to do. But again, I'm not, none of this discussion is about just creating better things for our people. That'd be a byproduct of it. It's it's also with the intention to promote and get some of these tournaments and on a more frequent basis, because I'll be honest with you guys. So, the gentleman I sat down and talked to at that conference that was doing the presenting is from Play Hard, Florida. He's married to a girl from Appalachia, Kowa. Her last name is Hindles. So, he was very in tune and very much wants to partner with Franklin County to help us promote sports tourism. He told me at that conference, that day I talked to him, he said, Commissioner, don't, he said, you guys can do what you want to with whatever. He said, but don't just focus on one sport. He said, because right now, I'm looking for somebody that wants to have a kayak fishing tournament. It's a tournament, but they have to be in a kayak to be a part of the tournament. He's in there looking for new places to do it. I said, well, send them our way. We, if they're brave enough, we'll put them out in the Gulf, or if not, we'll put them up in the river. I mean, whatever they want to do, they can catch saltwater fish or freshwater fish, but we got the spot. We are good for that. So, I I don't know if this board's ready to make that finding today. I'm good with it, but I do know we're not a full board here today, so.
We might make a joke, but that kayak fishing's gotten to be huge around here.
Yeah, just like pickleball.
Go to the island and walk, look at that island side over there. I mean, there's, I've got friends that's got kayaks. I'm just lazy. I'm not going to do it, but.
No, I'm not getting in a kayak like that. I have more enough time with a kayak, much less trying to fish out of it. But I, again, I don't know what the pleasure of the board is today, since we're not a full board, but I don't see any problem with us making that legislative finding, because, again, it's come with a recommendation from your T D C advisory board. There's something's been discussed. It's definitely statute. It's just up to us what we want to do, or if we want to wait and defer till we have a full board. I'm good with either way.
I think we should, Mr. Chairman, defer wait, defer we get to a full board. That way Commissioners Sanders and Lockley can weigh in.
That's right.
But I think, like you said, sports tourism is definitely the way to go, because not only does it benefit our locals, it will benefit people in the community. That's the whole point of this, is bringing them to us.
Yes.
And we do have, well, let's just say, we have a lot of multiple different avenues that other areas don't, like the water, so.
True.
I'll second the motion and comment. I don't believe we're going to have to worry about those two, not wanting this. I mean, but but I understand, and I'll I'll second it, so.
So, we're going, what, table it to the next meeting, or?
Was there, I thought she made a motion.
Uh-uh.
This is a discussion item, isn't it? It's not an action item.
I thought it was.
Either way.
Either way, okay.
Possible board, yeah.
I'm I'm getting second burned out, so.
Wait, who's done more motions and seconds today?
I don't want to keep up with that.
There was no way to hide today.
Yeah.
Well, I I will say, Mr. Chairman, historically, I I think when the board is making these fundamental new policy decisions, y'all generally want the full board to say, have everyone there. I mean, obviously, that's not a written rule, and you don't have to do that.
Right.
You got to form a presence, but.
I don't think anything's on fire today. We're.
No, we'll kick that can.
Not down the road too far, though. We don't want it too far kicked.
Okay. Ma'am, move on to the.
Yes.
Got two additional items.
Mm-hmm.
One is the board action on the resolution that Mr. John Collins has prepared and presented to the board. I've read over the the resolution. I've called Mr. Collins and had him, you know, clarify some questions that I had, which he has, and so what the the import of this resolution is going to do is there's an F D O T project number, it's four-two-five-six-one-three-dash-six, which presently sets aside funds for the design and construct utility improvements. The all, that entire project is going to be done away with by this resolution. It's going to be redesignated as the Design and Construct West Hanger Developments. Mr. Collins has told me that although there was this F D O T grant that I just described to you for the utility improvements, no money's been spent on it, really no action's been taken on it. And so, you're now just changing from the the utility improvements to the West Hanger Developments, and this resolution would then authorize the the airport manager to coordinate the public grant agreement with F D O T to make that change, and then to provide the agreement back to Franklin County Board of County Commissioners. It says for signature, but I think I would rather rephrase that as saying for board consideration, and then y'all decide what to do with it. But I I've read the resolution, and I recommend that Chairman go ahead and execute that to facilitate the decision that you made earlier in the meeting today. But you did not by vote of the board authorize that, so you would by motion and second have to authorize the chairman's execution of the resolution.
I'll make a motion.
My second.
I thought we did authorize that in terms of contingent on your review.
Oh, did you? Okay.
Oh, so we didn't have.
I thought we did.
I'm I'm beat up like the rest of.
We could make more motions. I mean, it's okay with that.
I thought it was contingent on your review.
Okay, well, then.
If you're good, we're good.
I am very good with it. Then, the last action item is, I called each of you yesterday individually and notified you that I had this last action item. It's for a second invoice that's been submitted to the board by Coastline Clearing and Development, L L C. The invoice is dated June thirtieth of twenty twenty-three, but this invoice hit my desk yesterday, around three-thirty or so, between three and three-thirty. And what this is in regards to is whenever the board, and I, the handout I gave to you is a, has an excerpt of your special meeting from May twenty-third, where I presented to the board two items. One was an emergency contract with the dredging around the East Point Channel, and then the second was to award a a contract not to exceed a ten thousand dollar threshold for the removal of the spoiled debris. It's my understanding from the second invoice that there was an insufficient, inaccurate estimate given to the contractor by the dredge operator. So, when he submitted his initial invoice, it was for ten thousand, but apparently there was basically almost double the material that had to be moved out. And so, he has submitted the second invoice. He submitted that to Ms. Aaron. She forwarded it over to me, since I was the one that had made this presentation to the board back in May. So, asking for board action to consider authorizing payment for the second invoice in the amount of seven thousand eight hundred and seven, seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars.
So moved.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Amos. Any discussion? I will say, just so the board's a hundred percent clear on what we're talking about. So, yes, we we, the original, what we're looking at was based on what the contractor for the Corps was telling us. Boy, if I'd have known then what I know now. But anyway, which wound up not being sufficient, and Mr. Butler was caught in the middle, that's who the the thing was for, because he was moving the material, and this guy was trying to give him more material, and he's like, hold on, that's not what you told me, you know what I mean? So, he was kind of caught in the middle, you know, they're trying to pump it up, and I'm saying, Tim, you know, will you please move it? And he said, yeah, but I said, well, send us another invoice. I mean, we're just having to try to address it. But it wasn't anything to do with the contractor that we had hired for this particular amount of funds. It was, he was given insufficient data, so that's what ran us to where we're at.
No surprise there.
Well, they couldn't have left half the material there.
Yeah, no, we were just trying not to do that.
Exactly, so.
That's, we didn't have no alternative.
That's right.
Sometimes you get past the point in their return, and that's where we were. Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Commissioners, I have a number of informational items on my report. Typically, I don't go over information items unless, you know, a individual commissioner has any questions for me. If there aren't any questions, that will conclude my report.
I do have a question for you on another matter, though. So, we have an issue, or yeah, we, the county, we have an issue brewing between the residents of the H O A at Sunset Beach and the H O A at Three Hundred Ocean Mile concerning an eight-foot county easement that's in between the two properties. I have done my best as their commissioner, the ones that have contacted me, to try to get them to resolve the issue without the county being involved in it. I was told yesterday by several different residents that that was not going to be the case, that they, one is adamant that they're, the people that are renting at the other place better not get on their property or words to that effect. People have been threatened at, cussed at, you know, threatened to be arrested, threatened to be prosecuted, all kind of different stuff, for walking across probably what is an eight-foot easement that the county owns. So, Attorney Schuler, by, just by direction, I'd like for you to reach out to the H O A for Sunset Beach and Three Hundred Ocean Mile and see if we can't resolve this issue, because in my mind, we not only have an eight-foot easement there, but they have a ten-foot side setback. So, they're probably both in the wrong. They probably both have something on the county easement. So, if they can't resolve and allow people to be able to access the beach between their two properties, we might have to take action with the ten-foot side setbacks on either side and clear us a twenty-eight-foot path there. But I want you to communicate them, see if they can resolve it themselves without us being involved, is what I'd like to do.
Okay. But the the information you're receiving, Mr. Chairman, is it's actually the H O As and not individual, I guess, unit owners?
No, it's H O As. They've they've gotten letters, some at one, residents at one area have gotten calls from the person that represents the H O A at the other area with threats of lawsuits and all kind of different stuff.
I'll have to try and find out who's managing the H O A, get in contact with them.
I have no idea. I haven't researched it that far, but.
Can't be that difficult.
If they can't get along, we're going to have to put the heavy hand down.
There you go. But I'm trying, I'm trying to be a little bit softer and not just put the heavy hand to begin with, like we've done in the past, but let them try to resolve it theirself. I think it'd be better, because, again, all we have are people, they might be renters, but all they're trying to do is get to the beach. That's all they're interested in, so.
I'll do it.
Thank you. Anything else for Attorney Schuler, Commissioners? All right, Commissioner comments?
Mr. Chairman, I just would like to say, I know it's been a while since we've been here, but the fact conference, I just want to extend my congratulations to the chairman for being the twenty twenty-three Presidential Advocacy Award recipient. So, he got to wear this medal down there like he's all cool. Anyways, bling it up, bling it up the area down there, but congratulations on that.
Thank you. It's all part of, you know, the the, I will say this, the, the, in the past, since I've been doing this and been a part of what they do at the Association of Counties, there are several things that I might not have known at the time that they were answering for me by attending some of those conferences, some of those workshops. But in doing the job, I said, oh, I remember hearing this answer already. Or, the other big thing I get from being, from going to those kind of conferences is, we realize that we're not the only ones tiddled with issues. Everybody, they might be at different levels than us, but everybody's dealing with the same kinds of issues. Everybody's having infrastructure problems. Everybody's trying to deal with, what what are they going to do with waste and, you know, other stuff and water issues and.
Poor housing.
Yeah, it's all, it's all the same everywhere you go. So, and a lot of those areas, the benefit of this, I'll tell you this, you've both been doing it less time than I have. The benefit is, those other Commissioners you can meet at the Association of Counties, you might not can call each other and talk about something, but you can sure call them. They're in another county, you know what I mean? And get a get a heads up, or get a thought, or an idea, and it is very beneficial, because, you know, there's nothing in sunshine law that says I can't talk to a Commissioner from Gulf or Waukulla. You know, we just can't talk to each other about stuff we're going to vote on, so. But it's it's a, it's a very good, a good deal. Thank you for that acknowledgement, Commissioner. And and also, just so the public is aware, so by motion and vote of our representatives from our counties, which are thirteen counties in Senate District Three, Commissioner Ward is now on the fact board of directors. Commissioner Ward is now on the fact board of directors. So I stepped down from that seat for District, uh, for Senate District Three, but she was able to assume that district by motion and vote of her peers, so. It was, it was a good meeting all the way around. Other than COVID, we had a good time.
The county should know that, that you guys are great ambassadors. Uh, Ms. Cheryl knows everyone. Noah knows everybody. Ms. Cheryl knows everybody.
Yes.
Um, obviously you, you, when I walked in, I seen you had that T-shirt on. I said, he's serious. But no, y'all did a great job.
You gotta be all in, you know what I mean? Whatever, wherever you at, be all in.
What, what little, what little bit of time that I was there, I was the COVID king, which we all know, but, uh, but honestly, I was, uh, y'all, Franklin County, we might be a little, but we were represented very well, so y'all did a good job of that.
Well, historically, we're usually one of the few counties that always has complete representation. At, at, especially at the summer conference, we really are. And they announce stuff like that all the time. Uh, just so the board is aware, I received this in the mail. I didn't get it till today. Apparently the, with the Florida Department of State, I don't know if it's coming from Carabel or somebody in Carabel, but they're trying to do a proposed downtown historic district. It's being reviewed. I just wanna make sure the board is aware of that. I guess they sent it to me cause I'm the chair of the board, but no action from us. I just wanna make sure y'all are aware of that. But, uh, that's all I have. Anything else? Meeting adjourned?